All right, everyone. Took a bit more time to get things started. We're sorry about that, but let's go on. I'd need a motion to put an end to the closed meeting we were attending. I move that we close the closed-meeting session we were in, Mr. Mayor. All those in favor carried? There were some directives that were handed out during that closed meeting we attended. One of those was to reconsider salaries that are paid out at the next closed meeting. We will be revising the salary grid in the next two weeks. Also, the integrity commissioner matter. Well, I believe this was 5.3. Be resolved that municipal council hereby accept the hiring of Mr. Nicolas Denis as a full-time planning or planner effective 2019 and that he be subject to a probationary period for six months. And be it also resolved that Mr. Nicolas Denis' salary is established at level one, class three of the current unionized employee salary grid. Do you have... Yes. Be it also resolved that Mrs. Claire LeMay be promoted to planner three as recommended and that the clerk and the mayor be directed to negotiate an agreement similar to the draft agreement provided by the United... Hold on. Hold on now. I'm sorry. Moved by Councilor Levaire, seconded by Councilor Zant. Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. Go ahead with the second resolution, Councilor Levaire. That the clerk and the mayor be directed to negotiate an agreement similar to the draft agreement, similar, provided by the United Counties of Prescott and Russell with the intent of naming Mr. John Saywell as integrity commissioner to the city of Clarence and Rockland at the next meeting of council. Seconded by Councilor Bouchard. Questions? All those in favor then? Carried. Thank you. And that's all that needed to be taken care of with regards to what was discussed at the closed meeting. Fine announcements, Mr. Lalonde. Yes, last weekend was the very last weekend, Mr. Mayor, for the Clarence Creek Carnival. It was the 49th edition and we're preparing a good deal of interesting things for the 50th anniversary next year. We had a lot of fun at the casino night this past Saturday and it was once again a great success for the Lions Club members. So we'd like to thank the Lions Club and Lions Club would also would like to thank Clarence and Rockland for its participation. Mr. Simar, then? Mr. Levaire? Mr. Bouchard? And that takes care of announcements. Let's go on now to question period. If you have any questions or comments you'd like to make to council, now's the time to do so. We'd like you to give us your name and your address. You have three minutes to do so. You have three minutes allotted. Good evening. Yvonne Violet, 6:58 baseline. If you have any questions, I'll answer your questions afterwards. I'll just read through the document I've prepared now. During the course of the January meeting, you voted to do some work on my ditch without me being there. I make you aware that there are three new councillors that had no idea, new councillors that had no idea as to what they were voting on and they were just following along with their more experienced colleagues. I did not have the chance to talk about the erosion of my property due to the greater volume of water coming from the city of Clarence and Rockland. You granted me, Mr. Mayor, two minutes to allow me to forward photographs with regards to the damage caused to our property. Saint-Jean and part of Jouennes drains onto the property and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to make everyone aware of this situation. Now the town council is well aware of the situation and I'm asking you to revise your decision and to prolong infrastructures that have been newly installed last fall. I had occasion to talk with all town councillors during the past two weeks and on an individual basis, I was able to answer all of their questions and even then, one town councillor set foot at my home to take a look at the damages caused in spite of the snow there. He noted that there were some deformities on the sides of the ditching, on either side of these said ditches. Mr. Levaire and I also spoke about why I objected to assign my land to be considered as a municipal drain and we touched all bases with regards to this question. Having equipment myself and having friends in the excavation business, I supplied to Mr. Lalonde estimates to reinforce the sides as well as the bottom of the subject ditch. Now, the estimates that were supplied at a price that was considerably under the price that was submitted by the infrastructure department bears truth to the fact that we're ready to perform the work needed at a cost basis and I'm ready to support this project with my friends in dealing with excavation as well as Mr. Eric Leroux, who's an expert in the matter. In the matter. So I'm asking you to be proactive by continuing to implement what has been done on baseline road and to avoid any further damage to my property and the ditching, abutting my property and my neighbors' property. Mr. Zant? So I just have a question for Mr. Leonard because now we do know that what's in the process of, what's happening right now might have an impact, might have an impact on our, on the infrastructure of the roadway per se. What would cost more, repair the damage that was caused by the water or repair the roadway once it has been torn down and scheduled for repair? Well, I don't believe there would be any damage to the road per se. The highest risk resides in the fact that drains in rural areas are considered differently. As I mentioned, there are many municipalities that are in the process of protecting these rural areas, but this is something that should be applied municipality-wide, this particular principle, and should not be, ought not to be considered only or strictly for this particular property. The major risk lies in not being able to make use of this outlet to manage our excess water. It would completely block off the flow of water. So what would be your recommendation? What, I already explained the municipality's recommendation, our department's recommendation because of the fact that we haven't implemented a policy that would allow us to manage this situation properly and because of the major part of the municipality that's impacted, that is rural and we have a lot of creeks or ditches that wind up in this particular situation. The department recommends not to do anything and also we have to take into account that this particular drain is considered a natural outlet, a natural outlet. The municipality does not have any responsibility to maintain the said ditch or to control erosion that would occur within that drain, which is considered as a natural drain. I presented three options however. One of those options was to register an easement along the property to address the erosion problems and that would be something that the municipality would be in a, in a position of maintaining, easily maintaining throughout the years to guarantee the safety of our outlet. Can we then tonight talk about the easement or should we mandate you to come back to us with a further, more precise report, not dealing precisely with this gentleman's situation, but with other situations and all other drains in our municipality? Well, you've already mandated me to come up with a report with concerning a similar type situation with regards to registering an easement and costs associated with that. The difference that was there in this particular situation is that we'd have to register another easement and other things that he has not considered in his estimate that we'd have to pay out as a municipality. But certainly if this is a direction that town council wants to take, it would be quite prudent to perform a student, to study, should I say, to determine how many drains we have to contend with of that particular nature and what type of work we'll have to undertake because it would create a precedent. Well, I know that by the time we complete a study, this gentleman will lose half of his house, but don't forget, this is a municipal drain here. I've mentioned that on many occasions. Many individuals have paid for municipal drains. Don't forget that there's a lot of water running by down that area. Now, the water that seeps into the drains there stem from neighboring fields and if you're caught paying to alleviate that situation, you'll be caught paying for, to alleviate a lot of similar type situations. I know, but that water seeps onto the roadways also and Mr. Leonard has stated this. So what's... Yes, but that's why we have municipal drains. The province is the entity that will assess how much water goes into the water. That's not the question. I haven't finished, Mr. LaViolet. I had you speak up. It's my turn now. The amount of water will be assessed and you'll receive an invoice for the amount. Mr. Simar has a similar type situation. If you set foot on a private property to fix up a natural drain that is impacted by water seeping onto the said property from agricultural, neighboring agricultural lands, you'll be facing a hefty bill. I know that this is not the way that you want to continue dealing with the city of Clarence and Rockland. You've mentioned this previously, but is this something that would satisfy you to be able to meet us halfway in all of this? You see? Well, of course, it stands to reason that, you see, he doesn't want any of the remedies that we're proposing right now. Mr. LaViolet knows exactly how things are. You've seen on baseline approximately one kilometer from where you are where the sides were shored up with huge rocks and then the, this did not do anything. Well, Mr. Leroux came over to my place. We spoke honestly and we, I was told what would occur if I signed to register this as a municipal drain. It would take three years to register this and the ditch will not hold in the meantime. I've exchanged emails with Mr. Roussel since 2004. The ditch will not hold up. I'm telling you this quite frankly. I've supplied estimates to Mr. Lalonde on a cost basis. I have equipment. I have friends in the excavation business. I'll perform the needed work on a cost basis. That's the price that it would cost to register the easement and pay out lawyers' fees. There's not even one rock bedding that has been put in yet. I just, I'm undertaking to perform the work. I'm just asking you to discuss this and take a look at the numbers. You've just spent a quarter of a million dollars at the bottom of baseline road. Mr. LaViolet, put the prices together. You, I forward them to you. Well, that might be, well, we might decide that tonight. No? Let it be forwarded to... Well, just to be prudent, let's be prudent in all of this here. Mr. LaViolet's offer is quite generous, Mr. Mayor, but as a municipality, we might incur risks and we cannot get involved in that type of enterprise or business. Well, in this case, we wouldn't get involved because he's the one that would perform the work, but the municipality has no control upon work that is, or the quality of work that is performed on private, on private property. The best approach, if you're considering an approach, would be to register easement to, and to ensure, ensure, Mr. Mayor, that we have access to that particular part, that particular parcel of land that we wish to maintain in coming years because once the work has been performed, Mr. LaViolet has already installed piping in the past few years and they're already deteriorating. I'm not, you know, making any comment, that's the quality of work that was performed, but as the years go by, infrastructure work tends to deteriorate and we have to revisit those repairs in a few years and set foot on the subject property. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm in agreement with what's being proposed. Yes, costs are a bit more considerable, but it's the safest way to proceed because if it starts blocking or, you know, backfilling or blocking, then we're caught up in a quandary. Well, look, the water has to go somewhere, but we're just talking about properties here. No, I understand. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Zant, but if it blocks up, he can say, well, you don't have any business setting foot on my property. Mr. Leonard? Sir, the analysis that you performed, the situation, is this the same analysis that Mr. LaViolet has made that led him to the conclusion that this drain will not hold up for the next three years? This ditch? Well, really, I cannot state categorically that the same difficulty will not be encountered in the next three years. It's clear, of course, that erosion is a problem in that area. It's a matter of, once we distance ourselves from that street, I believe they have installations there, a garage and a house, but we're dealing here with a private property and not a street maintained or a municipal maintained street per se. Now, if the situation deteriorates completely and if the ditch fills up, water will have to go somewhere and will drain naturally somewhere, maybe on neighboring properties or it might, but certainly it will drain in that particular direction. It's a risk that we wish, risk that we will incur. As Mr. Leonard states, if we create a precedent, there are many agricultural lands that surround that area. Well, Mr. LaViolet, what we stated in our conversations over the phone is that we'd come up with a situation from a municipal standpoint that could work out. If we take a look at what can be done to ensure that from an infrastructure standpoint we proceed correctly and that the drain be repaired properly on a long-term basis, well, you see, my worry is this. Yes, we might purchase this bit of land, this parcel of land, and then we have to set foot on that land again to maintain it and maintain it and maintain it anew. It's a municipal drain that doesn't work, that doesn't function properly. I know. I've read the report and that states that municipal drain works out properly, is a proper solution. We don't like this solution, which calls for a municipal drain. I know that that doesn't meet with your wishes, but if you feel caught in between a rock and a hard place, I understand your feeling, but are we ready to assume that particular risk as a municipality and as a town council? We might have to resort to an, further analysis. This is what Mr. Zant says here. Can we do something in waiting for the municipal drain be installed? And what can be done until the municipal drain be installed that might solve the problem? Mr. Leroux will come up with the arrangements that need to be arrived at and at the same time will take care of the municipal drain. Mr. Leroux is the one that takes care of all municipal drains within the United Counties. Well, when I spoke to Mr. Leroux, when you get into the fine print, given this infrastructure that we have at our disposal, we run the risk of losing a lot of land, of property. Well, Mr. LaViolet, I'm caught in the same quandary. I lose property with municipal drains. Yes, but it's not located 30 feet from the house. What can I tell you? I'm not the one that brings in water. It's water that comes in from all the neighbors that are located on top, at a higher level from where you are. Well, your three minutes are up, Mr. LaViolet. We'll consider it and we'll give you further news, but there's a high volume of water that goes by there. Mr. LaViolet, your three minutes is over and done with. I understand, Mayor DeJardine. I understand, but I'd like, we'll talk about this and we'll come up with a decision as to this. Thank you. Well, I believe that there were other people that were caught in the same, in a similar type situation. There was a municipal drain that was installed and the solution was, was found. Of course, he'll lose control over his property. Yes, I understand, but at the same time, he'll lose property, but at the same time, he'll lose property because there'll be some, some bland erosion and he will wind up losing property one way or the other. Yes, sir? Andre Sarou, 103 Gujon, down at the bottom of the hill. I don't want to address the situation of the roadway, but I want to talk about the Alma Street situation. I have a property on that particular road and I had occasion to speak to Mr. Grimaud. There's something bad is bound to happen in that particular area. The street is not very wide. This is a roadway that leads to street, to schools of the YMCA, grade school. There's youngsters that go by there in the morning, in the afternoon and at night. There are buses that run by there or that attempt to drive by there. At present, they cannot go by there because it's a, it's a two-lane affair. Well, Mr. Sato, we have a solution to that. We can't vote upon this because Mr. Grimaud is not in attendance, but Mr. Grimaud has brought up a resolution concerning narrow roadways and that particular roadway that you're alluding to is part and parcel of that resolution and to convert those roadways into a one-way, in one-one-way streets. I was to talk about this. Yes, because Mr. Grimaud is absent because of work, it will be implemented at the next council meeting. I'd just like to make you aware however, Mr. Mayor, that it's a fairly thorny subject matter and something needs to be done. We will act upon this, trust me. We'll have to add something also, Mr. Mayor. At the committee of the whole agenda, but you haven't identified where those things needed to be added on the agenda as it stood. Well, I believe after Mr. Grimaud's matters, yes, this should be added, yes, should I ask a matter of procedure? We have a petition with regards to the skating club. Yes, we thought to deal with this at the next item, should I deal this? Well, thank you. My name is Steve Whitaker. I'm going to speak in English because I live at 254 Pilon Street in Clarence Creek. Fine.
I've been running skating club for over 25 years. I've had my four kids go through that program. I still have one of my kids representing our club at the national level in spigot skating and I'm a little concerned about the impact that we're going to have in 4% fee increase for the ice fees. There are two things that I'd like to talk about tonight. One is based on the support that we saw out of the petition that we ran, there's a strong indication that the public doesn't really support a 4% fee increase for ice fees and field, field fees increases. And the other thing is, I strongly believe that we should have been involved in this process, that the minor associations should have been involved with discussions about what the impacts would be on a fee increase. When we found out, when our committee found out about this meeting, we came here last week and unfortunately I miscued myself and I didn't get up and get a chance to talk to you guys last week, so thanks to the support of our councillors, we figured out how I was supposed to get here and here we are.
You always have a chance to speak at any council meeting, whether it be the first or the second meeting at the question period.
Right. Historically, I'd waited until our agenda item came up and then we were allowed it. So that's, that was my fault and I'm sorry about that. So we'll try to get it right this time. Okay? In order to understand how much support we would get about the concern related to the ice fee increases, we put out a petition. We only had the petition out for four days. We got over 200 names on the petition, which is technically almost 1% of the population of Clarence Rockland. These people were against the fee increases. It's difficult to say really how much more percentage of the order of people we would have had if we had more time for that petition, so I'm sure it won't be less than what we got, would ideally even more. We understand that the council is responsible for developing a budget and making sure that it works for everybody. The projected revenue of 4% means $53,000. Okay? That's, in the research I've done, that's $2 and a half dollars per person in Clarence Rockland. Okay? But that amounts to $30 per skater and the associations. So there's a difference there in what that impact really means. To get to your targeted budgets, you guys listen to your city staff, you've done your consultations, you've heard from us and you've had to make some tough decisions. I get that. Okay? We have worked historically with community service department. I've known PR for years. We've worked with them trying to mitigate how these impacts will hurt the clubs and the associations and we've always tried to come to consensus on how we can move forward. That didn't happen this year. I'm not sure why, but it didn't happen. If you look at your budget proposals, you're talking about a 4% increase for us, you're talking about a 2%, 3% or 4% increase across the board in various areas, they're all increasing, but my concern is what's the cost? The cost is to the families that want a budget for their children in sports activities. We're hiding the fact that 20% of the kids in Clarence Rockland are now going to have to pay a higher fee to do a sports activity. I think we need to look at this conversation and instead of saying, let's increase the fee, let's maintain our, our costs. We have quality arenas. We have this Clarence Rockland arenas. We have the Clarence arena. We have great facilities in this environment. We should be promoting that opportunity. We should be going out and saying, let's not follow what all the other communities are doing. Let's have a fee-based structure that makes sports activities here affordable. Let's go the other way and try to be the leaders in the community and say, bring people here to Clarence Rockland. Come here for your hockey tournaments. Come here for your baseball tournaments or your soccer tournaments. We're all going outside. I don't know, there's some hockey tournaments going on, you know what I mean? We, we need to attract people. It's good for the economy. It's good for, you know, the businesses around here and it's good for our clubs because we now get to participate locally in competitions. So the other question is, what's the cost of the ice fees? If you're going to increase the fees, yes, you guys get, it's easily identifiable, you're going to get $53,000. What's it going to mean to us? It means that we could lose skaters. It could mean that we'll lose baseball players or soccer players and those numbers are going to drop. We're still going to have to keep the facilities working, but you're going to have less ice time rented, you're going to have less fields rented. So your costs, I'm not sure that they balance out.
But you realize that in subsidy, we give $236,000 to all teams. We subsidize their, their costs so that they're lower. So we're already giving a lot of money out to subsidize and making our rates quite comparable to anybody else around.
I can argue the point about the rates around the municipality because I know that your community services folks will do that research. I've done that research. My concern is that we are seeing ice that's not being rented. Four or five years ago, all the ice was either booked up by the minor association or other people outside of town who come in to rent it. I don't know that that's happening anymore. I can't tell you how many times I've gone to the Clarence Rockland arenas and I've seen ice available. 10, 15 years ago, we, we were at council fighting because we wanted more ice time and we couldn't get any more ice time booked after 9 o'clock. There were no dry ice times. We were starting at 6 o'clock in the morning. And now you're seeing on Saturday, which is technically prime time for ice, empty of lots of ice. I don't know what time they mean is closing Clarence, but it's not closing at 10 or 11 o'clock anymore. So what's happened? We've driven our prices up so that we can't afford it. In our registrations, we hear from the parents saying, I can't afford for me to play hockey so that my kid can come to skate and learn how to skate or, or play hockey. So that's my question. That's my statement. I'm trying to say that I think we need to take that leadership role in Clarence Rockland and say, our fees are reasonable. Why not move to Clarence Rockland? Our housing is affordable. We have great, you know, services. We have great businesses and now we can offer quality programs at a much less cost than it would cost you in Ottawa. So if we can uphold these rates, then we have that opportunity to have that conversation and promote that. You've got families that want to move here.
I agree with what you're saying, but we've got to get the money somewhere.
If you want the money somewhere, if you look at the $53,000 fee increase, that is less than 110% of your budget.
But if I had looked in the past, between 2011, if I remember right, to 2017, there was no increase in rental, none.
No? 3% increase every year? No? Every year where we did increase?
2011 to 2017, there was no increase. It was 195 for all those years. And 2017?
The associations raised their price, but not us.
Monsieur Bouchard?
Yeah, these are the facts. There was no increase from 2011 to 2017 and actually, we started in 2017, 2.5%. To 18, to 19 went up 3% and this year, we're asking 4%.
So I just wanted to add, the associations may raise their prices. Yeah, but we didn't, that's not so. I just wanted to...
But if you want, if you want...
But if you want to keep that conversation, then let's go back in that timeframe. Because up to that point, the fee increases had almost doubled. Ice fees had doubled. Then we lost our time on our non-prime ice. You raised your increases. So from a figure skating club perspective, our fees basically doubled in one year. Our registrations went from 130 kids down to 50. And we haven't been able to recoup from that. Okay? We've now, we can hold a line study, I think the last couple of years, at about 50, 60 skaters. That's it. Because the cost of the ice is there, and now we're going back up again. I can't stop to minor hockey. Okay? And I'm sure that their fee structure, they're going to have to do the same thing. If you look at baseball and you look at soccer, I know a little bit about soccer because, again, my kids were involved in soccer, and those fees went up. So, you know, and at that time, when soccer was around, the deal was that, you know, city would mow the lawn once, and soccer would mow the lawn once. And I think now the municipality always mows the lawns. So what I want to propose here is that we actually don't do a freeze. We, sorry, don't do a freeze. We do a freeze on the ice fees this year, but we have a conversation with the local associations to try to figure out how we can work together to eliminate the impacts in the future. If we were to have to raise the fees, then you guys get to understand that a $53,000 fee increase means that I could see 10% less skaters. If I do 10% less skaters, in two years from now, three years from now, I won't have anybody skating at the club. But the arena's still going to have to operate. So you guys now are going to accrue the cost of operating an arena that's not going to have all the ice rented.
And I'm joined now.
But you said it's about $30 per skater per season. How many games, how many times do we skate on average in a season?
Well, sorry, I can't get into, honestly, I can't get into it because I don't know nothing about hockey. I'm sorry, I'm a figure skater.
Okay, well, figure skater. Like, how many, with figure skating, how many times do they go to the arena, each skater?
So, okay, so.
In a season?
Let's, it's going to be a difficult answer. The answer is, we have kids who learn how to skate. Okay? So that's the bulk of our program. That's about 30, 35 skaters, right? They skate two 45-minute sessions per week. And then we have the rest of the skaters who skate on a Tuesday night, or Thursday night, or a Saturday. And I think we have total of eight hours of ice time, I think, in a week. So six and a half hours would be for what we call our senior skater, our more advanced skaters.
All right, so about, how many hours altogether?
I think eight hours, eight or nine hours a week.
A week, for how many weeks?
Twenty, 27 weeks, roughly.
So it's 160 hours a season for $30. So it's not that much of an increase per hour when you think of it. Less than 50 cents.
Fair enough, but you're not the one sitting at registration having that conversation with the parent. We are. And we're going to have to say to these parents that it's a $3 fee increase for your.
And my second point is, you blame that the decrease in registration is due to the increase of the cost. We don't have any studies that prove that. And also, it could be just that the kids have so many options now with sports, so many new sports that are available, new possibilities, that that could be a part of it too. So we cannot just blame that it's something that's the increase in the cost. And I was wondering, Mr. Mayor, if the counties have a special fund to help the families that would be making, for example, less than a certain amount to help for sports, to encourage the sports.
I was trying to figure out where it's $53,000 came from because it's only $26,000. So I'm trying to figure out.
Oh, you came 4% increase?
Yeah.
Not 1% increase, but 1% increase.
So according to all the stats that I have from 2017 to 2018, I did all your association. For figure skating, I can confirm that 4% increase will cost $21.54 each skater more per year for next year. I have it for all the associations. But altogether, the increase altogether is half of, it's $26,000. That includes summer sports, which is soccer fields and baseball fields.
But summer sports, how much do they increase by?
The 4%, the same as hockey and figure skating.
But what's the total amount at the end dollar-wise?
Summer sports is not expensive because the fields are like $40. So it's $846 for them, but they take less hours.
So we're being quite reasonable.
I don't know, it's just, you know, when you're raising rates and it's not, it's not part of, it's not part of the real costs associated with the facilities. It's more lined up with, "Well, we need to keep our budget under 3% type deal."
No, I.
Because, well, I mean, to be serious, I mean, otherwise, you'd be increasing them by cost of living every year.
Which is, which should have been.
Let's go cost of living.
Which is between 1.5 and 2%.
We've got how many years here that we didn't raise them? We bring up cost of living every year.
Yeah, but to his point, they were raised way beyond cost of living 30 years before. And, and I agree with him. Hockey associations or soccer, whatever, they could recuperate those losses from those losses. Because, yeah, the increase was nonexistent for a couple of years, but the rate was still high. So you have to, and don't forget, those families are the same families that some are in daycare, some do multiple sports, as Mr. Whitaker said. We want to keep, Zian, you're the first one to say every time, "We want to have our kids doing something so they don't get into trouble."
I agree.
So, I mean, to a point, you have to put your money where your mouth is.
But the costs has to go up too, Monsieur Lao.
No, the cost, yeah. But I'm saying is, the 4% is not based on an operational reality. It's based on making budget work, is what I'm saying.
But let's talk about family in that soup. The conversation to ask ourselves is, what kind of community do you want to be? The whole idea of having kids involved in sports and having families come down to Clarence Rockland, and that's the reason, that's the selling point. You tell them, "Come here, we've got these great facilities. We want them to be active. We want to reduce the crime rate." You know, we talked with Protective Services, and, you know, we're getting all of these new issues of gangs and stuff that we didn't used to get out here. Exactly because we're getting situations where kids are falling more and more out of sports because sports are being more expensive. The other big part of the problem with the ice fees, I'm okay with all the fees that we accepted for the 4% as far as the soccer fields are concerned and baseball and all that. The ice fees are different because it's different from one association to the next as to what the sports are. If you're a figure skater, the 4% hits you like it's 10. If you're a minor, timid hockey, then those teams have like 15 players on them. So there's barely an impact on them. When you get to the adult leagues, you'll get more impact on there because there's less people. So it's not even equal on how it actually affects that 4% on different groups. That's why the figure skating is here. You know, and obviously, minor hockey will sign the petition as well to increase it. With that being said, you still need to have an increase because all your fees are increasing. Like we say, everything goes up, and our costs go up. I think if you're dropping it down to a 2%, that's more reasonable than a 4%, you're talking about $13,000 on a $40 million budget to have a community that's active and that's attracting people to come down here. So to me, for $13,000, we can find $13,000 somewhere else and still have a 2% rate, which is.
Well, I think we have to be fair. If you vote with 2% for their skatings, because it requires way more expenses to maintain those sports. The parents choose to have their kids do an expensive sport. So the parents who choose, the parents who choose to have the children do other sports, they should also, they may choose that because they cannot afford the hockey, even if it's not that as expensive. Sometimes they just cannot afford it at all, even though there would be no increase. What I'm saying is, if you do that, then you do it to be fair for everybody. You cannot increase for certain sport and then choose some sport to do other sports. Because people, that's what I hear from the citizens. They say, "Hey, I cannot even afford to send my kids to do ice sports." And that's why we do other sports. We find other ways to keep them busy, keep them active. So I think inside you, you do 2% on every sport, so it's fair. Or you maintain it. And I think that the fact there was no increase for almost six years, it's not good. It should have been like even half a percent or 1% every year. And at least we wouldn't be in a situation.
So we have that politician then, and now they have a big.
But, no, what I'm saying is, from now on, we should not increase more than 2%. We shouldn't increase 1% only every year just to go at least with the cost of living. But because we haven't charged, you know, we haven't increased it for eight years, it's, this is why we're in the position now. I'm sure that Mr. Bouchet doesn't voluntarily say, "Oh, well, you know, I'm going to increase it to the maximum." He goes with what the cost will create the arenas and tries to make, you know, to increase the cost to be able to meet those expenses. So it's either we cut it somewhere. I have no problem. I want the kids to be active. I believe in them being active. It's important for socializing. I think it's important. There's a lot of volunteer too that, you know, that we don't count the time that they want to be culture skilled. And that adds a value as far as the community. But what I'm saying is, we have to be able to compensate for the cost. So I don't know what the recipe is. I don't know what's the best way to do it. But if we do 2% to 2%, then we need to cut somewhere else. And where do we cut? That's really the discussion we have to have.
Monsieur Zan?
We're getting into the actual line of the budget item, which I think we will be able to discuss in a little bit. But to Monsieur Bouchet's point, when we had the budget discussion, Monsieur Dino, you sort of put your own spot, but I'm pretty sure we're not, we cannot risk manage. We have to, a budget has to be budgeted. Like, that's the whole point. So you can't risk manage $13,000. It has to come from somewhere. So we will be discussing the budget later on, where we will have options and where we can actually take this from. I just, I'm not shutting you down. I'm just saying, we will be discussing it at that point. But I agree with you.
One example I can give you, we had Monsieur Le Du here discussing with us last week, I think. And he came up to us, there's a compressor just from $80,000. We're not even, it's not, the raise we're casting is not even going to pay for this compressor. And that's one arena. And so the costs are coming up on us. What did the cost of arenas cost us last year?
Yeah, fast street arenas are on $110,000 less a year.
Just offering.
If you figure out the subsidies we gave, what it's costing us for the arena, we have to go get the money somewhere. And you're darned.
Agreed. But the thing is that if we end up increasing the cost of the ice, it's going to have that impact on the registration, which goes back to that whole argument that we're going to have empty ice. You're going to have to fix that $80,000 compressor for the ice to sit empty. So my conversation is more, as much as I'd love to see the freeze happen this year, what I'd really like to get out of this is an agreement that you have an arts council, you have a library board, you have different boards. Why not strike a board with the minor associations and the community services so that we can have these conversations early enough so that we're not here at this point when your budget conversations are essentially done? And we can do that.
But the thing is, our budgets are all public. Anybody can come here and argue. We had four or five nights of budget. We worked a lot of hours to put that budget together. Nobody came.
But if we, I can't speak for the world, okay?
The night the community services are on, all you have to do is show up here and discuss it. If there's something you don't like, you discuss it. But that's why our public, the meetings are all public for.
But why do that way? Why not be the other way, where we meet with them and we discuss things so that when it comes here, it's not that whole conversation? You guys will get that full picture of understanding. If it's a 3% increase.
I'd gladly make a committee for all of you together and organize it to meet. We can meet once, we can decide how many times we want to meet. But I'll be glad to make a committee and meet with you and discuss all these things before. There's no problem.
To me, that makes more sense.
We're a little late for the committee this year.
Absolutely. But the thing is, you know, we've got to remember that this is volunteers running all of this. So we're all trying, you know, we have diverse backgrounds, and, you know, we all change committees every year. So we don't know what kind of committee level, what volunteer level base we're going to have at a committee. So it makes it very difficult for us. Our decisions for price fees are made in June for the season that's going to come up. And that committee then gets to inherit that problem. You know what I mean? So it's a vicious circle. If we can get ahead of the curve and have conversations.
But I'd gladly organize a committee for your association altogether. Not, I don't want a committee for.
No, no, and I don't want, I want all associations there. I don't want it just for figure skating. I don't believe that, that's the wrong way to go.
Monsieur Bouchet?
Just to make sure the facts are straight, these rates only apply as of September with new rates for hockey seasons because they already settled the rates for the whole season. So normal rates would come in as of September for that. Soccer and all that, that would take place and affect this summer.
But the rates are going up that much for soccer and baseball and all this.
With San Francisco.
Yeah, but the cost is very low.
Yeah, we could argue that point too, right? Because the number of people, the cost. I'm not going there, okay?
Thank you.
Okay? All right, so I'll leave that.
Okay. We'll have a budget discussion in the next.
Okay.
Ice discussion, because we've got an agenda.
Bonsoir, Monsieur Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow consular. My name is Robin Bari. I live at 2265 Druin Road in Hammond. Yes, it's Mr. Levert's ward. And so I'm wearing a couple of hats. I'm a member that's quite involved in my community, and I'm vice chairperson of the Optimist Club in Hammond. And I'm president of the Hockey Minor Hockey Association here in Clarence. I'd like to give you another point of view. I'm here to support Mr. Whitaker in what he stated to you. Can I be heard through the mic? Yes, yes. Now firstly, I'd like to show you an ice rink invoice for the month of January that was forwarded to us for three weeks' worth of ice rental because we were, we had three weeks' worth of holidays at the beginning of January. You told me, Mr. Bouchard, how much it was to rent? How much the deficit was? $110,000 at the beginning of the year? Yes. Notwithstanding any future projects that might be implemented. So with regards to the Micro Hockey Association for three weeks' worth of ice time, it was going to cost me $28,400. Don't you receive a grant to offset this? Yes, we have a yearly grant. We received a $27,000 check to offset our costs. But on a monthly basis, it cost us approximately $35,000 worth of ice time. So if you consider that we have over and above 160 youngsters playing house league minor hockey, the percentage really is, is not equivalent. Now, given the $28,400 represents an increase of $1,100 per month, just on that particular matter. I don't know if you're aware, but there's a second part to all of this. And I don't know if you're aware of the ice rental policies. Did you have occasion to read them all? You know what's what then? Yes. Well, the one dealing with this particular site was the one that was implemented last year. It's not the current one. Now, there were some increases from 2014 to 2016. We're talking about $195. And 2016, 2017, $200. And an increase of $206 last year. I'm sorry, I didn't understand that properly. Yes, we alluded to that, yes, yes, earlier on. Now, there's another increase that will be tantamount to $214 this coming year. These are hefty increases. Now, the challenge that we are called upon to meet, given the policies that you've implemented, is that we request ice time on the 15th of March for the next year. And we have up to the 21st of September to hand over this ice time. Now, what I mean by that is that after that particular date, we have no right to withdraw our privilege to rent ice time because we're pegged in. Our regular season starts up in the month of October. So it's really a guessing game at that point in time, you see. And let me tell you that when we're talking about those months in which we have a lot of teams caught up in tournament play or those teams that are playing outside of the arena property, we're losing thousands and thousands of dollars on a monthly basis of ice rinks that we can't sell. We're trying to sell it, but we can't. This is money that's lost by us. We're making, we're making you a favor by advising the city of Clarence and Rockland that this ice time, that this ice will not be used. You have no employees employed there because you often close up the arena because you know that the ice has already been paid up and has not been offered to anyone else. So we're losing money for ice time that we're not using because the policies are pretty much clear-cut. And it's a heavy burden heaped upon associations, those particular regulations. Over and above that, you want to increase our fees. And for me, it's quite simply, I have one youngster that plays hockey, $700. It doesn't pay all that much because he plays house league. I can pay this. But others cannot pay, even though their youngsters love to play hockey. And they ought not to consider this as a luxury. You know, Mrs. Chouagny, I believe that your comments find a bit off-center here. No. I know what you mean, but there are costs associated for everything. But this is a passion. But are there anything outside the organization? Any funds you can tap into to help out those youngsters, to alleviate the financial burden? Well, those grants are not all that easy to obtain, Mrs. Chouagny. And when you have two or three children that have a willingness to play hockey, for example, it becomes a heavy burden on those parents that are called upon to pay for expenditures. I don't know if you went through the steps to ask for grants. It's not all that easy, especially for those family, those families that aren't up to par with their knowledge of how to go about obtaining grants. It's not always easy. I was approached as a chairperson by Valeris and as a volunteer. According to me, it's more than the cost of living. You know, we've been talking about cost of living here. A sport is not a luxury. It's something that should be offered to be, should be offered to everyone. We have adults that are playing sports and it benefits them on a health and a mental standpoint. And I believe the city of Clarence and Rockland falls very short of meeting the youngsters' needs. Hold on a minute, ma'am, because you're going a bit far here. Take a look at how many outside exterior skating rinks that we pay for. And there weren't any increases to organizations such as the Hammond Optimist Club that maintain these skating rinks. They asked for increases for over and above. Well, take a look at the cost involved. We purchased new aluminum skating boards or boards or skating rink boards. We have the Leving Park that we're maintaining for cross-country skiing. We do what we can, man, with the money we have to cater to the needs of our children. We don't have all that much of a big budget as compared to other municipalities. For example, Ottawa that have businesses that they can tap into for tax money from one side of Ottawa to another. We're trying to do what we can, but they charge much less to rent out their ice rinks. $191.75 per hour. Mr. Boucher, here are the rental costs. $191.75 is what Ottawa asks, which much less than what we're called upon to pay by the city of Clarence and Rockland. Well, don't forget that the grant, of course, that they receive, since I can't understand the figures that appear in those particular documents that you forwarded to me. What's this particular number here? Well, Mr. Mayor, does the amount include the grant that has been deducted from this? Well, given the grant that you've received, it amounts to $136, you see. Now, see that we don't, yes, we're on an equal footing with everybody. I'd just like to make sure that, we were talking about a supplementary cost borne out by the city of, but the ice rink time, I'd just like to make sure that everybody's aware of the $1,000 or $1,300 cost. The $53,000 amount that was, we were referring to, we're talking about all of the fees, planning and everything else that are being, that have been increasing by 4%. And all user fees have also increased. And let's not mention that the UCH has not within, or the CHS, or the Amateur Canadian Hockey League does not figure in all of this. We deal a little bit with Clarence and the 4% as Mr. Whitaker said, generates only $10,000 worth of increase. You're paying $136 on an hourly basis. Yes. But you're heaping your income, this additional income on the backs of families that can't afford it. This is revenue that generates money for the city of Clarence and Rockland and not to benefit the citizens. Ma'am, we received $236,000 worth of grants. That's why in four days, you've received a lot of signatures. I've taken a look at the signatures appearing on the petition, but many of those don't live in Clarence and Rockland, but from VARs and elsewhere. Well, that was during a three-day period when we were approached by the city of Clarence and Rockland. We were asked at the very last minute, we were warned that we had to forward those signatures before a certain time. And we received emails stating that, you know, the petition had to be forwarded at 12 noon. But if you give us a bit more time, we'll come up with a fair amount of signatures over and above what we've come up with up to now. Thank you very much, ma'am. Let's continue on. Shall we? Are there any other questions or comments? No? That's fine. Let's go on now with the agenda. Yes, that's fine. Let's go on to consent items. Are there any consent items that you'd like to withdraw from the list of consent items? Go ahead, Mr. Le Verre. Could you please read this for us? These consent items? Yes, Mr. Mayor? My pleasure. My pleasure. I'm getting there slowly but surely, but I'm getting there. Beat resolved that the following items, as identified under consent items, appear on the agenda of the regular meeting of the 20th of February 2019, be adopted. 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings. A, regular meeting of February the 4th, 2019. And B, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of February the 4th. 10.2, receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. A, accessibility advisory committee meeting minutes of June the 12th, 2018. B, accessibility advisory committee meeting minutes of November the 20th, 2018. C, planning committee minutes of December the 5th, 2018. And D, planning committee minutes of January the 9th, 2019. 10.3, the following recommendations from committee of the whole of February the 4th, 2019. A, municipal sponsorship policy. 10.4, resolution to appoint members to committees and boards. 10.5, resolution to hire project coordinator. 10.6, resolution to adopt the accounts paid from January the 13th, 2019 to February the 10th, 2019 in the amount of $3,327,202. And 10.7, resolution to adopt the salaries paid from December the 30th, 2018 to January the 26th, 2019 in the gross amount of $944,684.64. Yes, 64 cents. And net amount of $650,726.88. Seconded by? Sir Cavalier? Thank you. All those in favor then? Carried. 11.1, budget adoption. Monsieur Bouchard, resolved, Mr. Mayor, that bylaw number 2019-09 being a bylaw to establish the budget estimates for the year 2019 be approved, seconded by Councilor Lalande. Any questions? Any questions? Let's hope we don't have any questions. Monsieur Lalande? Well, given the discussions that we've entered into at the question period session of tonight's meeting, I move that we take a further look at the fees be capped at 2%. Those fees that are charged to those making use of ice rinks, baseball fields, soccer fields, and so on and so forth. That would be seconded by? We have to come up with a source of money to offset these increases. I need someone to second this motion? Fine. So we're going to obtain the money to offset this shortfall? Well, fine. We received an email that reflects expenditures incurred by individual departments. If we take a look at the specific budget dealing with salaries, with the salaries for our volunteer firefighters, for example, there are two sections of this particular budget that caught me a bit by surprise. The first one being, Mr. Mayor, that the budget allocated for training purposes. Do you want to go in English for the benefit of our fire chief who doesn't speak French?
The one thing that concerns me is that 2017 and 2018, the training budget was the same $112 and change, but yet we went over budget like crazy. And that's a general question for the administration. I'm wondering, why isn't there a mechanism in place for budget items like that that go over budget to be flagged to council before we end up at the end of the year? Specifically on a budget item that is fully controllable by the administration.
Monsieur Wilson?
Mr. Mayor, through the merits of the councillor's question, we generally don't report on each GL line within our budgets. Some lines go over, some lines go under. When we recognize that some lines were going to go under, such as response fees, we took that opportunity to try and meet the minimum training requirements to get our firefighters trained to the first responder level for medical, which is a 40-hour course, which drove our training costs up in 2017. So that was a calculated balance, which at the end of the year resulted in our department being very, very close to or slightly in the surplus situation. But it was managing the possible response fees versus training costs and the overall salary budgets to try and manage that factor.
But in 2018, you were over by almost 50 grand?
Sorry, 2018 is the year that I first...
Yeah, okay. So you were over about, almost 20 grand for 2017. The other component that, to me, is a bit odd is that your fire budget, which is basically the budget line that you control the less, because you don't know how many events you're going to get in a year, that one you masterfully are able to go under budget. Specifically, if we look at 2016, 2017, and 2018, we had annual budgets of 280 to 285, but we spent 261, 229, 236. So an average of 242, which is great, which is under budget. But yet you're asking $310,000 for this year. So, I mean, I don't see the justification in having, I read that budget line and to me, it's inflated.
Monsieur Wilson?
Mr. Mayor, through the merits of the councillor's question, first off, I guess salary budgets are established by the finance department based on the negotiated rate increases in our union agreements. Our volunteer firefighters are unionized, as are our full-time firefighters, so there are negotiated wage increases for our part-time volunteer staff. Those lines are increased as a percentage based on the union negotiated agreement. It is true that trying to determine how many calls you're going to have every year is a total guess, although statistically, in the last couple of years, we've seen an increase in the number of calls. One of the challenges the department has faced, and I'm fairly confident I've brought this to council in the past, is that we have a decline in the number of volunteers being available for certain calls and at times we don't have any responding to calls. There are measures that we're taking to try and put in place, the attendance requirements stipulated in our collective agreement, which will likely drive response numbers up and an increase in our accounts payable line for salaries due to more volunteers coming for calls. You never know what that's going to be. Every firefighter show up for every call, we would blow that budget line out of the water. So it's a bit of a gamble when you're dealing with part-time staff and the uncertainty of emergency calls and not knowing how many calls you're going to have this year and how many people are going to show up for every call, what that cost is going to be. Let's say, we've had no input in the salaries line for that since my employment here at the city. It's a calculation done by finance based on the percentage increase in union agreements.
Yeah, but you know, I'm looking at the numbers. 236 is what we spent in 2018. And so 236 to 310 is a huge jump. And to me, I think some of that can be, I hate to use the word certain of us are using, but you know, risk management. But you know, there are ways for the fire department, I think, to try to, and I think to your credit, you've done so in certain cases where you have health-related calls and stuff like that, where you no longer go out with a big truck and four black guys, there's a smaller truck that goes. So that's great. But I think, you know, we're all into a position here where we need to make sure that every dollar invested from our taxpayers is to the maximum that we can afford. And I think that's, those two budget items are, to me, are a bit inflated and need to be adjusted down.
Sur le cas spécifique, Monsieur Dinoye, est-ce qu'on peut savoir la pression budgétaire qui demeurerait si on coupe de 4% d'augmentation across, qu'on rémunère à 2%? C'est quoi le montant qu'on a besoin? C'est quoi la pression budgétaire qui nous manque?
Vous parlez seulement sur les activités sportives.
Of course, I brought this up with regards to sports activities. Now, instead of having an increase of 4%, we have an increase of 2%. What's the difference, really? It's about $5,000. $7,500. Let's go back to the source. Mr. Wilson?
7,000... Yeah. 728 cents and...
$7,800.
And a coffee.
I mean, I guess, through the merits of the councillor's question, are you asking me to take that out of salaries? I mean, it sounds like that's the discussion coming from councillor that I don't know what that salaries cost is going to be. I don't know what the salaries cost will be for training. Again, it depends on how many of my volunteer firefighters show up on a given day.
I don't think that's an answer we can get with Monsieur Wilson tonight.
Can we just make a decision?
We can go for the vote and we'll see. Go for the vote. Monsieur Lalande has got a resolution there, asking to lower it to 2%. Monsieur Bouchard, seconded?
Do we specify 2% on what or just 2% within his budget?
The sports only.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, are we asking him to cut at a specific?
No, this is a...
I tell you, so he can decide where he can cut it.
Monsieur Wilson, can't just come up with a decision tonight there like that? It's been thrown out in this place.
So what you're asking him is to go back and figure it out, but basically, you're pinning in on him to do it?
We're, I'm asking, if you want to go cut somewhere or find the money, right now the resolution is to ask to lower by 2% for the sports only, which would be $7,800.
Is that risk manageable, Monsieur Dinoye?
Sir Maire, on point, not specifically, but just, I don't know.
Well, let's take a look at the budget picture and where we can remove. What I hear tonight is that the budget will not be approved tonight. So we can come back with a recommendation to determine where cuts could be implemented. Well, how much of percentage would it be if we were to heap that onto the tax rate? The $7,000, how much that would represent? Well, hold on. Let's just finish up with this one here and then, well, instead of the 2.92, we'd be talking about 2.96%. Well, there you go then. I'd much prefer Mr. Lalande's proposal. I think that we have to tighten the screws or to tighten the belt here, there, and everywhere. We've done the same with all departments. There are some things that can be better managed. We all know that. We're all cognizant of that fact, you know? It's not as if, it's not as if, you know, when you're, when you're given a budget, for example, training, for example...
You should keep moving over budget unless you have a mandate from council to do that. It's a fixed budget item that you fully control. And that's not strictly just for your department, it's every department. That's the way it should be done.
Through the merits of the councillor's point, if you look holistically at Protective Services budget, in 2018, we were on budget, actually, we're in a surplus scenario.
No, I mean, for your budget item line of training, you're way over budget. And I understand your justification that you gave us, but you know, if we're looking at trying to make sure that we don't run into situations where we have overrun costs...
Okay, fix it then. Before he busts, I better let...
No, no, it's just, I think the numbers are inflated. They need to be adjusted.
I completely agree with you. I would like to mandate the fire to cut their budget by 7,000 and whatever Monsieur Boucher said. Thank you. And then we will drop it down to 2%, which is what we need. If the fire chief requires more additional money throughout the year because he's going to run short, he can come back and ask council for permission. At that point, we will have additional monies that have not been spent throughout the year, which can go to his.
And then we can choose to re-affect.
And then we can choose to re-affect. But right now, I think if we mandate him to cut it by 7,000, whatever he needs, then we're good to go.
I second that. That's a good point.
I've got a resolution on the table right now. So that's the one you gotta hold on.
Well, the one isn't to cut specifically with the training. That was the solution?
No, it's the training line and the fire line. So I can't justify a $236,000 expense in a year and ask for 310 the following year.
If we go with the specific line, it allows us to vote for the budget tonight? Okay, so it would be done because it's not a valid year going on one specific line.
Okay, so we've got the resolution, drop it down to 2% and take it out of the fire.
Yes, and if the fire chief needs more, he can come back.
It's been seconded by Monsieur Bouchard in favor. There you go.
2%?
Yes, but just...
2% for the sports only.
For the sports only.
For all the sports.
Monsieur Dinoye, you just got to say...
Sir Maire?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? I'd just, I'd just like to have a clear directive. On the budget line that you are impacting, can come up with a recommendation at the next meeting for the $7,800 stemming from other departments? Yes, but we're accepting now the 2.92%. Can we vote on the budget tonight? Yes. Even if you don't have directives on that specific budget item, or, it's because the bylaw schedule or maybe might not be necessarily adequate. I don't know what the clerk thinks about this. Well, let's say if you cut down the budget from 203 or 202. There are many appendices, there are many... Please keep quiet, folks. Well, you see, in appendices, we present a summary of individual departments that won't match what has been approved. There's the next 284-19 report that's forthcoming that's directly linked to this. And of course, it won't work. It won't jive with a $7,800 cut. It's just a matter of accuracy, of course. It's not a big thing. What maybe what you can do is that you can vote against the adoption of the bylaw with relation to the budget acceptance per se, but adopt a resolution that mandates to bring the bylaw for further consideration at the next meeting. And you can pass the resolution, well, you've already adopted it, to reduce the two percent that would... To counteract the increase in ice rink rental fees and rental of sports venues in general. And that we shall reduce the expectations of the fire department's training needs. We were decreasing, decreasing. Unless we're able to adjust individual schedules, maybe a proposal that I'd like to come up with, and I don't know if it's going to go hand in hand with the court, with the clerk offers. At the presence, the budget is balanced at 2.9 percent. And maybe we should implement that bylaw and come back with another resolution, because we always contemplate a revised budget plus the adoption of certain rates. The OMPF has not yet been confirmed. There will be some changes brought about. And usually, in any event, we always bring back a report to adjust budget or budgetary line items. We can approve the bylaw as it stands and come up with a second resolution to propose those changes that have been proposed tonight. Well, I'm sorry. To confirm those changes that have been proposed, suggested tonight. But the bylaw has not been drafted in that particular fashion. Well, in any event, later on, prior to the adoption of the tax rates, we always are called upon to modify the bylaw for those other line items that are called upon to be modified or changed. Fine. So, you know, you can do so, but you're adopting something that is not fine-tuned or finished, really. Can we, Madam Clerk, defer this to the Committee of the Hall? Give Monsieur Dénoyier the time to come back with precise figures? And then adopt the budget at the regular meeting? If we can do so? Well, if we're able to modify the schedules, yes, we can do so. It's because we're running out of time with the budget at present. Yes, yes. Well, yeah. Do you have enough time to do so, Monsieur Dénoyier? Before the next meeting is called? Well, I don't think I have any other items to consider. I would move that we defer a final decision. So we'll defer the adoption of the budget so that it may be adopted at the Committee of the Hall. We won't adjourn at the regular meeting of council. We'll just come revisit this at the Committee of the Hall meeting and then deal with it then. 11.3, zoning bylaw. Be resolved that the report prepared in keeping with the 284-09, bylaw be adopted as presented, as presented in Appendix A. Can we adopt this one before adopting the budget? Just defer voting on this before going any further? Fine then. Then 11.4 then? 11.3. 11.3. Well, why not skip grandly? Whereas the provincial policy statement, the official plan of the United Counties of Prescott and Russell and the official plan of the urban area of the city of Clarence and Rogland all include policies to promote infill and intensification development within the built-up urban area. And whereas the owners of the property known as 1026 Laurier Street intend to add five additional apartment units to the basement of the existing condominium apartment building for a total of 32 units on the property. Be resolved that bylaw 2019-18 being a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw 2016-10 to change the zoning category of a portion of the property at 1026 Laurier Street from urban residential first density R1 zone to urban residential third density exception 36R3-36 zone. And to change the provisions of the R3-36 zone as recommended by the Infrastructure and Planning Department. I'm sorry. I'm getting tongue-tied here. And by the Planning Committee be adopted. And, and, Mr. Mayor. Be resolved... no, is that... yeah, I'll continue on. Fine, fine, all right, thank you. Be resolved that bylaw 2019-19 being a bylaw to amend the official plan of the urban area of the city of Clarence and Rogland to change the designation of the property at 1026 Laurier Street from medium-density residential to high-density residential and to add a new policy 5.6, 4.3 as recommended by the Infrastructure and Planning Department and by the Planning Committee be adopted. Thank you, sir. You did just fine. I bet you he doesn't even know what it means. Seconded, I need someone to second this. Monsieur Bouchard, thank you. All those in favor? Carry then, thank you. 11.4, Monsieur Bouchard. Yes, I hope it won't be as convoluted as the previous one, Mr. Mayor. Let's go on with the next resolution then. Be resolved, Mr. Mayor, that report LOI 2019-02-02 be received for information purposes or as information. Yes? Fine? So, that's fine, that's fine. You... don't forget that we have to review the resolution that was proposed by Monsieur Lalonde earlier on that replaces this particular one here. Yes. Go ahead, Monsieur Bouchard, Monsieur Lalonde. Whereas Community Services of Prescott Russell... Community Services are nonprofit organization that offers home services. And whereas they're asking to rent free of charge the Clarence Creek Arena to offer monthly meals to citizens in the area. Be resolved that the Council of the City of Clarence and Rogland grant the Prescott Russell Community Services to the use of the Clarence Creek Community Center at a reduced fee as identified in report LOI 2019-02-02. Seconded by Monsieur Bouchard. Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you then. That's fine. 11.5, appeal of zoning bylaw. Monsieur Bouchard, you can't escape this one. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll do my best. I'll do my best. If I can come up with it, I'll do my best, Mr. Mayor. All right. Whereas council approved the zoning bylaw submitted by Michel and Hélène Leblanc for 2164 Landry Street, file number D14-512, against the recommendation of the Infrastructure and Planning Department. And whereas Mrs. Monique Halloran of 2320 Landry Street submitted an appeal of council's decision to the local planning appeals tribunal. And whereas council has recommended on December 17, 2018, to try a dispute resolution technique to try to resolve the appeal. And whereas the dispute resolution technique did not end in a resolution from both parties. And as such, an LPAT appeal will be submitted. Be resolved that council hereby direct the administration to hire the services of an external planner and legal counsel to ensure proper representation before the local planning appeals tribunal. Seconded by Council Lalonde. All those in favor? Carry then. All those in favor, carry. Item 11.6, Councilor Zent. Yes, Mr. Mayor? Be resolved that the municipal council of the corporation of the city of Clarence and Rogland hereby adopts the itemized statement of remuneration and expenses paid in 2018 as per section 284 of the Municipal Act 2001 as presented under report FIN 2019-008. Seconded by Councilor Simar... or Councilor Grimaire. All those is not here. Let's go on now to bylaws. Are there any bylaws you'd like to withdraw from the list of bylaws? Monsieur Dénoyier, Monsieur Lala, could you please read those? Be it resolved that the following bylaws be adopted? 2019-17, lifting of part lot control, dealing with the CH Clement construction, Dr. Carbay Boulevard. 2019-20, business license bylaw. 2019-22, tree canopy and vegetation cover policy. 2019-24, easement agreement, Part 1, on Plan 50R-10806. Seconded by Councilor Bouchard. All those in favor? Carry then, thank you. Confirmatory bylaw? Oh, we'll just leave things stand because there are two items to be further considered. Well, we'll take a five to 10-minute break and we'll come back to attend the Committee of the Hall meeting while we revisit the remaining items to be revisited. So the $7,800 amount has been removed. If you wish, we can vote upon this, unless you might have further questions. Monsieur Lalonde? I'd just like to make sure that we proceed to a final vote with regard to this particular ice rental project. Either that we indicate clearly that the city is not... Oh, by the way, I'm dealing with the municipal drain now. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, and not the ice skating rentals. Following the discussion that we've had with Mr. Leonard, if we mandate the administration, Mr. Mayor, to come up with a series of criteria dealing with this type of situation with regards to municipal drains to determine what needs to be done by us? Well, the solution, as was mentioned, was the municipal drain solution. We've taken a look here, there, and everywhere to come up with a $7,800 savings. I don't know why you've come up with this at the very last minute. I'm just asking this question, Mr. Mayor, because Monsieur LaViolette is one of my large citizens. Do you want an... are you calling for an immediate vote on this? Who's in favor then? To either help out Monsieur LaViolette or recommend? To recommend to the department, maybe, the involved? Well, we need a resolution here, and it needs to be seconded. Come up with a resolution then. The resolution that I'd like to come up with then is the following. To mandate the resolution through Mr. Leonard's office to come back to council with a list of criteria dealing with this particular situation. Well, either we vote for or against. A resolution of that type, please. Just to clarify, you have a resolution to adopt the budget with modifications as proposed. And now you have this resolution on the table. Unless Council Lalonde wishes to modify this particular resolution to allocate money, bunnies to offset costs incurred by the project that is proposed by the gentleman. And after that, come back to the Committee of the Hall with new directives to mandate the administration to do something in this particular matter. So in other words, we're called upon to vote on another line item inherent to the budget? Well, unless Mr. Lalonde might consider waiting for the final adoption on the budget before fine-tuning it. Mr. Mayor, I would like to take a final decision. Well, a resolution requesting to come up with money out of the budget to pay for Monsieur LaViolette's ditch problem, to alleviate this problem. Move by Council Lalonde. Is there someone to second this? If there's no one to second this, we won't go any further. Well, Mr. Leonard already came up with a report. We'll either go forward or not with this. Let's finish up with this. I'd like to determine what you prefer. I would like, Mr. Zent, that this department takes a look into the question, because there might be other questions of a similar nature that will crop up again. It's quite clear. Given the length and breadth of the territory we're called upon to cover and the number of individuals involved. If we have criteria set out, and the department will be called upon to set out those criteria, well, the department came up with those criteria and we voted upon those criteria already. Let's not forget here that we're trudging upon private properties. A lot of individuals will come up and ask the same thing. That's why we should perform an analysis on these situations. That's why we have municipal drains running there and to determine who's responsible for each water breakage or seepage or leakages. And all owners are then invoiced thereafter. Mr. Simar? This is what I'm mentioning. The solution is proceeding through a municipal drain, and at that point in time, everybody works at the same level. There's no favoritism involved. If you're living close to the river's edge, and even if your property erodes because of the water there, you're treated the same way as others. So the resolution calls us to consider this motion or not? Do we have someone to second this motion? There's nobody seconding the motion. Council Lalonde. So let's revisit the budgetary items that we were asked to reconsider, the $7,800 amount. Fine. So the two percent increase dealing with all sports activities, not just hockey. All those in favor? All those in favor? Thank you. Fine then. I'd like to add something, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call a meeting dealing with this so that we could give a better direction to our budget officer when it comes time to prepare the next budget so that we don't face a similar type situation in the future. At this point, though, we're proceeding to a confirmatory bylaw. Well, we have to deal with 11.2, I believe, before we go any further. We're also revising budgetary... we're always revising budgetary items as days go by. 11.2 then? Be resolved that report prepared in keeping with Ontario Regulation 284-09, dealing with the 2019 budget be adopted as presented and as reflected in Appendix A of report FIN 2019-001. Seconded by Monsieur Levert. Any questions? Monsieur Dénoyier? Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me, just a few comments on this particular subject matter, this report. I'd just like to explain to you what the purpose of the report is, because we'll come back with the adoption of the budget year in and year out. And we're obliged to produce this one. Because our budget is prepared on a... in cash or what's... So expenditures should equal revenues, zero. So we come up with a zero-sum amount. And the end of the year, the auditor that makes use of an accrual system to revise our budget... So in the month of May, you receive financial statements that you always have either a surplus or a deficit that is different than what is... we present to you on a zero basis. Now, there are reconciliations. There's a reconciliation mechanism that is implemented to meet with the accrual standards set out, and we have to proceed to necessary judgments. When we deal with totals, we note in the report that there was a surplus of $1.8 million. Now, what's really important to consider is this. We always allude to the funding gap. We don't have enough money set aside to fund infrastructure work. But people seem to be confusing the fact that we have a funding gap and the $1.8 million. But we're dealing with a $6.8 million amortization process. And how is it calculated? It's calculated upon the historical costs of assets. There are many assets that are received, the municipality of... That are not necessarily in the books because the municipality might not have disbursed the purchase. The developer might have proceeded with something and has not been subject to any disbursements of Clarence and Rogland. However, reimbursement will fall upon the municipality, to be assured. So dealing with the funding gap that fits the zero-sum method with the accrual method compels us to deal with all those assets that are in the capital expenditure budget but that are not, cannot be capitalized. The auditor last year recommended that we had certain capital expenditure projects that are included in the capital expenditures project that are not capitalized. A good example of this would be, in layman's terms, let's say we purchase a computer program that would cost us $20,000, but it won't be capitalized in keeping with accounting... that would cost us $20,000, but it won't be capitalized in keeping with accounting standards, because this program might become outdated in a few months, or a year, hence. That's what I mean by the shortfall that we sometimes incur in their financial reports. Thank you, Monsieur Bouchard. Thank you very much for this clarification. Well, well. So the shortfall for the next year, what do you mean by that, ma'am? Well, those are assets that we'll obtain, that will be called upon to be finalized through capital expenditures. It's finalized by developers, and then it's taken over municipality, the municipality that is called upon to maintain the roadways and the ditches. So it's the value of those expenditures that will impact the 1.8. Well, you see, the $1.8 million amount, if we deal with our financial statements through an accrual statement, will come up with a profit. But we're making use, then, of amortization on assets that have a historical cost basis. So all assets that are transferred from the developer to the municipality have no history. So we're transferring this to the tune of $1 or $0, that, but that is not, does not reflect the true value of the asset that is being transferred. In the future, if we want to replace those major sums, will be called upon to be expended. Now, the $6.8 million amortization amount does not take this into account. And now, for the assets that you'll have purchased, will reflect the value that we've purchased of assets 20 or 30 years ago, well, we won't have the same value now. It could be double the amount now or then. That's when we calculate the funding gap. $1.9 million might represent a $6 million shortfall in the deficit. That's how we come about tabulating the final amounts. All right? Moved, seconded? All those in favor? Carried, then. Thank you. Let's go on now to the confirmatory bylaw. Could someone please read the confirmatory bylaw? I move, Mr. Mayor, that bylaw 2019-23 be deemed a confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of town council of 28th of February 2019. Seconded by councillor Zent. All those in favor? Carried. Adjournment called at 10, or at 8:51 PM. Thank you.